All right, we are right at 6:30 and I see that we are streaming live on YouTube. I will call our workshop session to order. Remind you for council that we will be in workshop format this evening. With an agenda that was prepared by staff that you have before you for consideration. And Karen, could we get started with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrom.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. And I would invite everybody to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'd like to shut off your camera before you do so, you can do so in the bottom left-hand corner of your Zoom tray. And we will have Dan display a flag, perhaps. And maybe not like, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have open forum on the agenda this evening. Karen, was there anybody to speak for open forum or any submissions received?
I did not have anything. Let me double check here. No, I do not have anything for this meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And our topic this evening, our single agenda item is our 2021 budget discussions and continuations of the conversations we have had in previous workshop sessions. I know Patrick and Sandy, you have prepared a number of exhibits for us. Do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. And I did provide the revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds for you to review. I won't go through that, but I do have a presentation that I can go through. So I'll share that screen. And hopefully, everybody can see that. And what we're going to go through, the first purpose is to go through our 2021 levy, since we do have have to buy legislative action, we have to do a approval by September 30th. And we're also going to talk about the 2021 budgets, not only just the general fund, but all funds were presented to you tonight. Okay. And this is the outline of what we've done so far and what we still have to do in order to make this happen and also to approve the final budget come in December. Right now, we're at our third preliminary levy workshop and our intent is to have a a proposal to counsel for approval to certify the proposed preliminary levy on September 14th. And after that point, we will have an ability to do another workshop on October 12th for our final budget workshop discussion. And hoping to then have the approval for the truth. We'll have a truth and taxation public hearing as well as the approval for the tax levy in the final budget by December 14th. And this grew since the last time we seen it. Last time we were just looking at the general fund and all the other funds that actually affected the levy. But I did put in parentheses still those accounts that affect the levy and some other funding sources that may be adding to what the fund is actually being funded by. So looking at the general fund, which is funded by partially by levy, we have a $10,182,226 budget and that hasn't changed since last time. The park dedication fund, we have a $372,141 budget. But what that is, is that's funded by park dedication funds. But it also has a fund balance that has been carrying forward for the last few years. And what you will find when we have our final discussion in October, they're using fund balance. They didn't spend down the fund balance this current year and expect to spend it next year instead. So we're going to be moving some of those budgets into next year. Surface water management is budgeted at $665,330. And this is funded by surface water management fees. And this is something that is in, we need to discuss at some point. They are at deficit spending. They do have fund balance available at this point in time to sustain. But at some point, we're going to have to have discussions in this fund as far as how we're going to be able to sustain the costs that are associated with this budget. The drug forfeiture is basically a revenue expense neutral used for drug forfeiture expenditures. And the next two, I'm going to talk in conjunction because the next two really have to do with what is funding our capital improvement fund. Part of it is levy related, but also part of it is bond related. And we have to keep it in a separate fund because if it's a bond, we have to keep it in a separate fund for accounting purposes. So that's why we had to break it apart. But if you look at the capital improvement budget, it's $1,328,000. And the street project fund, which is from the bonds, we're planning on using $1,627,000. So if you combine them, you'll see that on that CIP worksheet of what's being spent. The EDA budget at $50,730 is funded out of the levy. And the airport fund at $122,552 is funded out of those airport fees and all the revenue sources that come from that source. And the next three are debt service. We have the EDA, which is the refunding that happened this last year. The YMCA and the road rehabilitation, which we bonded for last year. And all of those are funded from levies. And what you're going to find is actually we levy for the August and the following February, which is a requirement for us to be able to stay ahead of what our expenditures are. So these expenditures are basically what we're going to be spending in 2021 in February and August. So there's going to be a little difference in the revenue coming in versus the expenditures. But these are the anticipated principal and interest payments that are due for these particular funds for 2021. So the EDA is at $1,363,725. The YMCA is at $59380 and the road rehab is at $312,375. The capital equipment fund is partially funded by levy as well. But it does have a fund balance that has been rolling forward and helping to have some costs associated with using up that fund balance. This is budgeted for 2021 at $1,48,001. And this is also a fund that we have to, we're trying to be creative in how we're funding some of the equipment needed for the following years. So we're going to have conversations as far as do we lease? Do we do something a little bit differently with some of these big cost items, particularly with the fire department for these next few years? So this is something we still need further discussion on and develop that 10-year plan accordingly. The water and sewer utility funds are our enterprise funds and these are handled a little bit differently than the other funds. The other funds are our government funds, whereas these two funds are enterprise funds, which are handled basically like a business where all the expenditures and all the accounting is done like a business entity. So looking at the water utility fund, of course, it's also funded by the water and sewer fees, which have been set for, I think, another three years. So the water utility fund, we're budgeting at $2,687,294. And the sewer fund is at $3,561,539. And these are revenue, they have a healthy fund balance and the revenues are exceeding the expenditures at this point in time. And this is something that we showed last time, last two times maybe, as far as what the levy effect of these funds are going to be. And looking at the general fund, the change was $482,758 at a 6.25% change from 2020 to 2021. Capital equipment, we had a $50,000 change at a 6.67%. Capital improvement, we did increase that by a 50,000. Debt service for the debt service payments that are going to be due. There's an increase of $50,080, which is a 2.2% and we did not make any changes to the EDA fund levy. And so the total levy is $11,484,799, which is a change from 2020 of $632,838, which brings it a total at 5.83%. And this is what was asked last time we met, how did the general fund budget changes from 2021 to 20, or from 2020 to 2021? And you know, you do your best and this is some of the things that came to highlight. The salary and benefits, COLA and all the contractual obligations amounts to $198,000 of that amount. We did have the park communication, which was a full year. We budgeted for a half a year this year. Of course, we haven't filled it yet, but that will increase the budgets another $39,000 with salaries and benefits. The health insurance increase, we did mention it was a 10% increase. However, there's always going to be changes in who's, you know, what kind of coverage each individual employee is going to have. So that's factored in as well. So there's a $29,000 increase there. And here's some items that we recognized in revenue that we decided to bring down just because of the economics of where there are at this point. And in detail, the permit revenue was actually $121,000. There was a small amount of permit revenue in another area that we brought down. We also have noticed over this last few years that the court fines and prosecution revenue was not coming in to what we had budgeted. So we brought that down to $15,000, which is comparable to what we've had in his last few years. Another one that we brought down was the police aid by $30,000, being like again where economics is. And you know, it was determined, talking to Rick, that he didn't think we were going to get that amount of police aid that was budgeted. So we brought that down $30,000 as well. And the liability and workers' comp really amounted to $5,000 for the general fund. There was a lot of help by the workers' comp reducing that effect because we are doing a good job actually in the claims and workers' compensation. So we actually got a decrease in our premium because of that. And then I also brought some net additional amount of $45,758 to explain it even further as far as what that difference is. And when you look down below, these are the additional changes that reflects that amount. And it's, it ends up being a little bit all over the place because there's was actually reductions as well as increases. And so I just wanted to be transparent enough to say these were some of the highlighted changes we have. And this is what it amounted to, to bring that amount to that $482,000. And we added the golf course additional budget of $50,000 as well as a human rights additional budget of $30,000. And there was some contracted service increases that we have, that are we going to be actually incurring. So in finance, we decided to add another $20,000 to meet those expenditures for 2021. We added $10,000 for the senior center and I put in other of $3,758 because it was all over the place. And I didn't think you wanted to see another two pages for amounting to $3,758. And then we brought down.
Member Gerard, if we could introduce, member Gerard has a question. Go ahead, Paul.
And it's permit revenues for $121,000. Is it that a decrease in revenue?
Yeah, and it's a decrease in revenue. Did I say an increase? It's a decrease in revenue.
Well, you know, if I understand, if I understand this right, the salary and benefits will make our budget go up. And as will some of the other, the park communication, but the permit revenue should decrease our budget or am I not seeing that correctly?
It is decreasing the revenue budgets, but it increases that total change, that increase in that 482.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's because it's a revenue. It's, yeah, it's actually decreasing that change. And I just wanted to take note with that total additional changes, we actually worked, Dave worked with us in providing some reductions that he thought he could do in his budgets to make it more in line with the actuals that are going to be coming in in 2021. So this is kind of the the explanation of where we're at. And if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer any questions.
The adjustments that you mentioned that Dave made, is that the $68,000 for the public works reductions?
Yes, that's the $68,000. He went, we went through line item by line item in his budgets, overall public works budgets. And he worked and determined, you know, there was some budgets that were going to be higher than what the actuals coming in for 2021. So we decided to bring that down to not, you know, if we don't want to keep the budgets in there if that actuals aren't going to be coming in. So it helped to mitigate some of those increase in cost as well.
So it's a net decrease to the public works budget. And again, it's recognizing maybe there is some room in the current year budget that's going to be unused. So it's.
Yeah, and yeah, and we're going to remain to look at that for this current year. And you know, we anticipate there probably will be some. And we'll see where that goes to the end of the year, but certainly for the following year, he identified those items as something that's going to decrease or could, we can decrease and he'll meet the actuals with that reduced budget.
I have two questions. One, the reduction to police aid. Chief Pearson, can you talk to who the funding sources for that and just a little more detail on what you're seeing?
Yeah, can you hear me from UMD here?
We hear you great.
Police aid is actually the training aid that we get from the Department of Public Safety for revenues to reimburse us for trainings that we attend. And unfortunately, with the coronavirus this year, trainings have really been cut. So we just forecasted that we're probably not going to see as much money coming in next year for this year's money. So like a few months ago, we got reimbursed for 2019 and about, you know, this time next year will be reimbursed for this year. So talking with Sandy and to Patrick, we realized there is going to be a decrease. We just don't know by how much.
That makes sense and agree with a conservative approach there. And on the golf course, the $50,000 that we're recognizing an additional expense is related. That's the direct amount that is the guarantee to the service provider. Do we have a sense based on how they're doing this year? It seems like they're doing well. Do we think that $50,000 is, it feels like that's maybe ultra-conservative, but I also don't know if, kind of how that's, it's their first year. So it's tough to, it's tough to know. Any, do we have any initial indications?
They're doing very well as we know. We don't know how close they will come to that $50,000 mark yet. The nice thing about doing the budget this way is that by October, we should have a pretty good idea of what that's going to be, whether it's 50, whether it's 30, whether it's 20. So we don't really know right now how close we are.
Okay. That makes sense. And then it's worth, certainly worth noting and worth discussion if council wants some more additional information. We hadn't talked about it previously or hadn't spelled out previously the additional $30,000 for the human rights budget. I just wanted to remind council that was, there is anticipated to be a request of the city related to the partnership with the YMCA on the Everyone Belongs project. This is essentially the, that YMCA Equity Innovation Center experience and the facilitation to create the plan, both the community vision and the follow-up plan. And the proposal that will come forward will be a joint proposal between the YMCA, the Forest Lake Area School Districts and the city. They are going after other revenue sources, whether that would be grants or participation from other cities. So that number may come down, but the $30,000 is kind of a conservative top-end estimate. Just, I'm not sure we had spelled that out as part of the budget conversations. And we've talked in other workshop sessions about next steps for the Human Rights Commission and our involvement in that. But just wanted to be transparent on that as an estimated future ask. Other questions that council may have, and I am, I want Sandy to continue showing her screens. It's helpful to have these numbers in front of us, but I'm not seeing everybody on screen. So if you're raising your hand and I'm not seeing you, just feel free to jump in.
And I certainly can answer any questions at the end as well. And the levy history that has occurred over these last few years. And looking at the 2021 proposed, it's at a 5.83, which is almost mimics what we had in 2020. As well as, you know, looking back, you know, we've had, you know, that 5.7 and 5.6 in 2017 and 18 as well. But looking at how this affects our tax levy, we have to look at it a little bit further as well. Because what happens is we have this tax rate that occurs, which spreads that levy amongst our taxpayers. And looking at where we're at in the estimation for 2021, we're at a 40.68, which again, kind of mimics where we were in the prior year at 40.33. And looking at where we have been in the past, it is actually below a lot of those years in which we had the 43.473s and the 44s. So that spread is going to be pretty similar to where we were last year. And you know, this is an estimation, of course. You know, they still are working on getting the finalized numbers, but based on Washington County's estimate, the cost to a homeowner for 2021 for a $300,000 home is approximately $1,179. In 2020, the property tax is $1,169. So like I said, again, it was pretty similar to where it has been and there's the breakdown between month and week and day as far as what that would be as an estimate at this point in time. And next steps, we can continue discussion of the 2021 levy. We're hoping to certify that preliminary levy in September. We have to by September 30th. Finalize those 2021 budgets, which we're in the process of doing those non-levy budgets as well as the enterprise funds. We're working on this 10-year plan. Once we, you know, get this budget to the point that we have, we can bring it to the 10-year plan and plug that into the 10-year plan to see where, how that affects that plan. And we're going to continue discussion of those final 2021 budgets as well as bring that final levy and budgets for approval to the council and certify in December. And with that, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for you at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Council, like questions, what questions do you have at this time?
Just a couple. Can you clarify what that contract service increase to meet budgets and finance means, Sandy?
Yeah. And I do expect us to be a little bit over this year. So I think there's a few areas in which we, you know, Lers, we're doing the 10-year plan. We got the audit, which I'm anticipating is going to be a little bit higher than what it was, has been. There's contracted services for our health insurance, which they do our RFPs and help us identify which we're going to be doing this year. So there's a charge for those type of services on a monthly basis. We have what we call an actuary come in and do actuarial studies for our post-employment benefits. And so that's a piece of that as well. And when I looked at how much we are going to be obligated to pay for all those different areas, there was a need to add the $20,000 in order to ensure that we have enough for 2021.
Okay.
And then I know we talked a little bit at the last meeting about the kind of the Lake Association, Forest Lake, Lake Association and maybe digging a little deeper into that breakdown. I noted that we did get a, or we did receive an email from Jerry Grundhoffer, the president of Forest Lake Lake Association. And I'm wondering if there are thoughts among city administration about that or if there's additional information.
Yeah, I'll take that one. Dave and I were looking into this and kind of where I alluded to last, last week was that it's a little convoluted. What happens is that in the past, the city has funded not only the Forest Lake, but the Clear Lake, Lake Associations. Those go up and down Clear Lake, depending on, you know, how often they're going to weed treat and things like that. So we fund some money directly out of our budget, but then also we get a bill from Comfort Forest Lake Watershed District to also pay for some of those expenses. So we're paying it both back and forth in different particular ways. What I would like to suggest, and talking, Dave and I were talking this through, is that before this budget is adopted, that we sit down with the parties involved here, which is the city, which is Forest Comfort Lake, Clear Lake Association and the Watershed District. And kind of put it all a budget together. So we really know what we're paying for and then who's going to, how it gets divvied up between the two organizations that we're funding, but also who's paying for it based on the Watershed District or us. I think we need a clearer picture of that. So it would be my intent to try to get a meeting with those different people or organizations in September. Sit down and say, okay, what's the need? How much is it? What do we have to do and who's paying for it? So I don't have an answer what we're going to do with that yet. But I think it would be a lot clearer, not only to me and Sandy, but to the council on what you're paying for and when you're paying for it and then what maybe the other watershed districts paying for it. So we just need to kind of clear it up and straighten it out so that everybody understands it. It really just needs to be a little more transparent. It's a little convoluted right now.
Patrick, on that budget from 2012, this past year for 2020, do you recall exactly what we did for the Forest Lake, Lake Association?
Well, we paid that, well, I know this year we paid them, I think it was $18,000 for weed treatment. But last year and Dave, I don't remember, I think it was $42,500, we paid for some kind of lake to the Watershed District for that. And then there may be more of that. That's why I can't give you a 100% answer, but that's why we need to sit down and figure it all out.
Yeah, because it is, you know, we've discussed this in the past too, where, you know, they've come up with a budget, which is fine. But we have to, we have to know exactly what, how that's going to affect us and exactly what we're going to be paying. So I agree with you, Patrick, and thanks for the hard work on that.
Yeah, I just think it's a better way for all the council members to understand what they're, what they're doing with the money, where it's going toward, how it's spent and things, things like that. So and you can then make a clear decision in the future whether you should fund it more or fund it less or fund it the same. So you need to really some clarity to be able to set yourself forward.
Yeah, and I would appreciate that as well because it really is, it's difficult to follow. I mean, it isn't, it is and it isn't. I mean, the numbers are there. The numbers are pretty straightforward, but. But, you know, let's look at the big picture of the work that needs to be done, what it costs. And who who historically and perhaps in the future will pay for what? You know, and where does that leave a potential city contribution? You know, maybe historically, you know, that who's paid what and, you know, how are we going to handle this moving forward?
Yeah, and being that this is a. A funding mechanism that can vary a lot from year to year, particularly when we're talking about treatment of weeds and things. We're going to have to look at taking that out of the general fund so we don't have those shifts. It's similar to like a capital equipment fund where you should plan for it and you'll know you'll have the ups and downs, but you can budget straight so that the fund balance carries over. We're going to have to explore that because the general fund can't take these 50 to $60,000 swings on an annual basis. Depending if you need weed treatment this year or three years down the line. So it really needs to be in kind of a different fund that that can have. Its own source of revenue and and not and can take those ups and downs and average it out along.
So Patrick, I I wholeheartedly agree of pulling that out of the general fund and. Especially because, you know, for example, the the last Clear Lake treatment that we did was expected to be a three year treatment. And how do we handle that versus if we're on kind of an annual basis with Forest Lake? And so I absolutely agree on pulling that out and just doing a, you know, a level commitment each year that is general fund or however we support that. It just allow us for that evening out. The other thing that gets confusing when we're talking about this, not so much with the Lake Association, but I get very confused when we're talking about the. Or I need more clarity when we're talking about the watershed districts is that they are their own taxing entity. And so. We're all dipping out of the same pockets. Well, sort of, there's a strong Forest Lake footprint, but it's not just Forest Lake. And I just want it can use some better transparency or better visibility into. You know, if they are their own taxing districts, you know, how are, what does that mean from a for city of Forest Lake tax perspective? And. Just I I can use some more clarity there on kind of overall budget. What is Lake Association versus Watershed District? And then again, because that that is a different funding source than if it's us just assisting the Lake Association.
Absolutely, and we have to understand what their role in this is and how much they're, if they are paying anything or how much they're paying.
Right. So to recognizing that we don't, you know, we're. Where whatever we set on September, we're capped out and. Are we comfortable that we've got flexibility for what we might want to do with lakes this next year? If that means putting it into a different fund or what are your thoughts on just teeing up those, recognizing there's some more conversations to come? But how do we tee that up from a budget, you know, for a September preliminary levy?
Is that my question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess what are you comfortable that we've got?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the levy is good at where it's at as far as the Lake Association. We will look and see if there's another fund that that this fits in too well as established fund. Now, what comes to mind first and foremost is the the Surface Water Fund, Stormwater Fund, whichever you call it. Because the purpose of that fund is to keep the lakes clean, obviously. So this is, in my opinion, a related expense that maybe fit in that well. Getting back to what Sandy said as far as the support, we have to look at that. That funding structure as well. We've already looked at it in the 10 year plan and are forecasting some small increases there. But depending on how much, again, until we meet and figure out exactly what the nut is here. We don't know what that's going to be, but I think that the levy itself is in good enough shape. And that the if we, for example, shifted to the Surface Water Fund, that's in good enough shape to. To support at least next year's activities until we have a longer term solution.
Is that fund supported primarily by storm water management fees? Is that the $10 per quarter?
Yes, yes, that's the storm water management fees, yes.
And do we have our, is that a fee that we have the ability to set at what we deem necessary? Or is there another regulatory level of approval to be able to adjust that fee?
Yeah, I don't believe there's a regulatory approval. I think we can set that to what we need to set.
Okay, okay. I just while we're thinking, I don't know if that fee has been adjusted in quite some time and so might be a.
Yeah, it's 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 my understanding that has been adjusted for long and Ryan looks like he wants to chime in on it. But again, looking at the 10 year plan preliminary, we are already looking at some kind of small adjustments there to keep that solvent and going and the right.
Right, right. Ryan, anything to add there?
Hey, Mayor City Council, just to add, this is a fee that's been discussed year after year just. Because of the, a lot of people don't understand what it's all really going towards. And, you know, it's it's a fund that's stressed pretty frequently based on all the things that it does serve. You know, it does take care of some of the lake stuff, but it takes care of a lot of maintenance. It takes care of a lot of MS4 requirements and those MS4 permits keep getting stricter and more requirements built within. And, you know, all that other stuff, it did pay for all the analysis of all your ponds. So now we have a pond priority cleaning project where, you know, that's where really where maybe Mario, you you probably cut the back end of a lot of those discussions in those years. On at one point, we weren't cleaning any ponds, you know, from the original construction. So and just a lot of daily maintenance culvert replacements. So, you know, a lot of people have expressed, well, I live out in the town old township, why should I be paying? Well, it you probably crossed 50 culverts on your way here to the meeting tonight. And that was, you know, one thing that we identified. And then just the cost sharing and some of the the programs that the watershed has done and led. And our downtown surface waters or storm art study is probably some of the findings come from that. So it funds a lot of different things, including from projects over on Forest Road where we did that massive second one in the states. Water quality structure, that's, you know, all hidden within the road now, but it's takes all the journey from the. Basically, the high school properties and through the wetland and then through the Winnick property and then under Forest Road before it discharges into Clear Lake. So, you know, it's all those big projects, water quality projects. It was part of a grant match with the onsite city hall project that won a lot of project awards. So there's a lot of things that fund actually serves and completes. I think Dave actually prepared some nice literature to be posted on the city's website if you guys want more information on that. Because there were so many questions of what that fund actually went to.
Yeah, I'd like more comprehensive breakdown of that for sure.
Another thing too, that's in progress is the, remember we got the grant for the sweeper?
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, way could we afforded to buy that sweeper standalone? But then the analysis project or the sweeping, you know, study that's ongoing to through the grant stuff too. So there's a lot of things that are going on that are a result of this fund. So just wanted to kind of let you guys know what that really all includes.
So given the nature of the list that Ryan, that was very helpful. Thank you. Given the nature, the list of things that Ryan just illustrated goes through this fund. Um, are we able to do a hybrid funding approach or we could do some of it with surface water fees and some of it through some general fund support? If we needed decided that that we needed a hybrid approach for a couple of years to establish a. Kind of a regular routine funding source that was independent of the general fund. Um, are we able to hybrid fund it?
Yes, I mean, you can fund it either by transfer or direct charge to the general fund, one way or another. It's it's perfectly fine to do that. Again, once we know what the the Lake Associations need and who gets paid there, we will then plug that into. The store, the surface water and see how all that interacts and try to have a better recommendation for the future of that fund. But we have to first know that first piece and then we'll take on the rest pieces.
I I think the other question that I have, I'm I'm in particular interested about the mill foil control. The Eurasian mill foil control, because I know Clear Lake, you know, made that significant investment in that control. And didn't and doesn't, you know, need to revisit that for that three year timeframe. And I noted a, I noted a figure in the email that we received from Mr. Gruntner. And I'm, I'm, I believe. This was supposed to be an enhanced investment as well, potentially that three year timeframe. I guess I'd like clarification on that as we're taking a look at, you know. You know, what what will be our role in supporting, potentially supporting that that investment? Are they trying to get ahead of this in that way like Clear Lake did? And I know Clear Lake had some terrific success with that treatment. So when he talks about that $45,000 investment, is that that three year? You know, is he looking at that three year timeframe, you know, not to see see that coming back?
We'll take a look.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, overall, I like the idea of pulling that into a surface water fund and finding a stable. Way to even that out in the general fund, even if we did have some hybrid funding of that from general fund for a period of time. I think that's a good option to explore. Council, let's maybe broad, just broadly open it up to other questions that anyone has on any of the general fund items that were presented tonight. And we're seeing another level of analysis and detail from previous meetings, although the overall totals are the same.
Sandy, could you, again. You probably have in the past, but again, talk about the capital improvement in the $50,000 increase there.
Yeah, we just increased. The levy portion, $50,000 to help. You know, increase that capital improvement fund a little bit every year. In order to sustain some of those capital improvement projects, mainly being the street projects is what goes through the capital improvement. So our intent is to add a little bit every year in order to sustain some of those costs of doing those roads.
Okay, so it's not one particular thing that we're, it's kind of a generalized.
Now that, but that fund is preliminary, mostly street paving. And that's where that would go. You know, the other option, obviously, we could look at long term debt bonding for streets. But that will raise it eventually raise your debt service, but the capital improvement fund is basically street paving.
Okay, well, my question about the extra money.
And and my recollection on that is we actually were going this direction last year and then we pulled back a little bit. We were, we were going to, we were going to go that additional 50,000 and then we ended up pulling back a little bit. But the the goal with this is really to get ahead of this. I mean, it seems like we're constantly playing catch up with that maintenance side of things. And so. You know, we 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 bonded to get ahead of it, but we need to also then maintain. What we're repairing and the goal of this is to try to get ahead of that. So we can, in essence, ultimately pay as we go. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, one of the problems, though, with only going up $50,000 a year to get to about a million to a million and a half dollars annually for us. For paving, which would still be a at least an average amount, you've got a long way to go at $50,000, correct? And we did pull it out last year because we did decide to, with the bonding package and the refinancing package that we went through. Was it, we bonded for $4 million for a street paving. So we thought at that point, you know, we were trying to to keep the levy at least in in. A decent place for for the taxpayers. So we decided to wait another year until we went back to back again, because we bonded for all those roads.
Okay, I would put a slightly, I appreciate your optimistic twist, but I think to say, I think the phrase. To get ahead of it might be a bit optimistic. I'm not sure we're getting ahead of it. I think we're trying to get out of the deficit we we were in for street projects. And that bonding request we did last year and the consideration of what do we do with the capital improvement fund. Really came out of that deficit that Ryan had done on the overall, well, Ryan and team had done on the overall street quality. And how far behind we were on maintenance. And so I think we've tried to catch up on how far behind we are. But to Patrick's point, I think we've got a long ways to go before we're close to a pay as you go program. And that's, and and I think last year I supported us stepping back from adding the additional 50,000. Because we've just made such a substantial change in funding. We've never funded for road maintenance before. We've always just used our. The franchise fees and local government aid. And we've recognized that's put us in a hole, so we need to change that. But I think we need to kind of grow into that change just to, because it is, it's a substantial. My mind, it's a pretty substantial change in how we've historically funded that, which unfortunately is reflected in our current quality.
Yeah, and and short of, you know, raising the levy one year a million dollars, which I don't think any of us want to do. There has to be, sooner or later, we have to have a discussion on if we need to get into a regular bonding cycle instead of a levy cycle. And I mean, basically supporting roads the same way. I mean, your debt, your debt services are levy versus, you know, trying to levy for road repair. It's just really a decision. I mean, right now. Rates are really low, money's cheap. We should, if you ask me now, I'd say we should be looking at borrowing some more money because it's it's at in the 2% or 1 and 1/2%. But that's part of the long term plan we have to look at and that's a long term decision making and policy, which way you want to go. And, you know, you $50,000 a year, it's going to take you 20 years to get to a million dollars. So, you know, that's that's decision making process.
Yeah, and maybe it was getting ahead of it was a poor choice of words. I think I was, I was, I was looking out long term. You know, that the goal was to be in a position where we could do what we needed to do on an annual basis to take care of our roads adequately.
Yeah, it it was more a start. It was more a start. Some, we had to start, we had to start somewhere. And at least we're starting and and it's it's a miniscule amount when in in comparison to what we need to do. But it's a start, it's start of some kind of a commitment to the infrastructure repair.
Right.
I simply just want to make sure that taxpayers understand where that, why we're doubling a number, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely.
That's all, that's all the monster. And I know, you know, that was been part of the discussion last year. And and of course, last year we had, we had to cut that levy down a little bit because it was what close to 8% at that time. So. And we were able to trim that down a little bit and that's where a lot of that came from. But anyways, it answers my question. I hope it answers the question for the folks that may be wondering why we double a number. Okay, so thanks, Sandy.
Agree. Other questions? Quick, quick review of timeline. This is our last planned workshop discussion prior to this being on the agenda for the 14th. Which is where the ask will be for a to set the preliminary levy. And again, reminder, we can, we can reduce after Monday. We just cannot get any larger. So anything, any other questions or anything, any additional analysis anyone would like to see before Monday?
I just like those lake numbers. So I I can better understand, you know. What investment we are in a position to be able to make, whatever that means. So to better.
I agree. The lake numbers would be, would be helpful, but I also want to say thank you to Sandy for doing the the slide with the changes in the general fund. That was really helpful. Agree. Patrick, Sandy, department heads. Any further questions or discussion we need to have with council to clarify next steps before the 14th?
I I don't think there's anything, Sandy, unless you have. I think we know what you want to do with the lake right now is what we need to meet and figure out. And then after you set the preliminary levy, we will continue to do some analysis and see what. Any different changes we can make to to that affects the levy. Which, of course, you can only go down, so we'll continue that work and through through the until December, when you. So we'll continue that work and through, through the, until December, when you pass the budget and the levy itself.
Right.
And, and the, the difference here is, is that we, we still are in the dark about a lot of different things, whether the state shared. Also, we, we still need to, we're going, we're in the process of trying to figure what the impact of all these revenues are this year and what 2020 is going to end up. So we will have to come back to you probably, it might be at that October meeting, telling you what 2020s look like and if there has to be adjustments made for 2020 as well.
That's helpful. I'm, I know, maybe just a quick round robin on some of the supplementary budgets. So I know that historic, so, so Airport Fund is an independent. Has, has the Airport Association been able to meet preliminary budget? I said Airport Association and I meant the, the Airport Committee?
No, we have not. But we'll be working on that Wednesday evening, I hope, so.
Okay, Dan, any plan, any, I'm assuming that if there were any general fund impact, that, that would already be considered? Dan, you're on mute. I saw a shirt, by the way, that said you're on mute, and I think I'm going to wait, I think I'm going to buy it. Well, Dan's fixing his mute issue. You're still on mute. There we go.
No.
Well, while, while Dan's, while Dan's fixing that, Dan, chime in, chime in at any time. The, I know the Joint Fire Board had preliminarily discussed budget items and those are reflected in the capital improvement plan. Joint Fire Board has a meeting on Thursday where it's my understanding that we will be approving the final budget. And that's again, the joint meeting between City of Forest Lake and Columbus. Any other, I'm just trying to think of other funds that might be impactful. Historically, we've had some cleanup in some TIF funds that were underwater, troubled, needing some issues. Are you anticipating any cleanup work needed to be done and any TIF funds that we should also talk about?
I, I think most of the TIF funds are in good shape, except for the Airport Business Park, which, which has an $800,000 issue. We have something that we, we're, we're working on. But no, other than that, they're in good shape and don't need any adjustments. The water and sewer are, as Sandy said, the rates have been set by ordinance already for a three year period. So those are locked in and those are in good shape. So the other funds are in good shape. The other long term thing that you have to look at is not only funding the lakes, but how are you going to fund the parks? Because the parks are only funded by impact fees and some general fund fees. If you ever want to develop parks or keep them maintained or, or, or put in new equipment, you don't get, especially if housing starts go down, you need to look at how you're going to fund that in a long term. That's a, that's a policy solution that, and discussion that we have to have once the park trails and lakes committee gets their hands around what they want to do and what their priorities are.
Is that microphone working now?
Yes.
It is, yes.
I had to select like four different ones to finally get one to work. So going back to the airport budget, there, there is no major changes to the budget this year. We just got a word from Men Dot that the grant funds that we got for our projects are going to be less this year. So we just adjusted our, our expenses to match up with the, the grant funds that we got for the fuel system. So I'm just getting the bids back on that, but no major changes. It's pretty much a cut and dry budget, same as last year, we'll get brought over to this year.
That's great. Thank you. Staff council, any other, any further questions this night, tonight, or things we should be considering before we adjourn? I don't see anything. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. My dog is making a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call for adjournment?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Thank you for the good work, everybody, and we'll see you on the 14th. Have a good Labor Day. We're adjourned.
Good.
Good night.